Welcome. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Start with the lead. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In this hope for the reading and justice. Thank you. Well, let's go to the lead. It's on the way. We have the next item of business is the audience. You did remember all the audience who were here today tonight? They've not moved on to approval of the minutes of the September 17 meeting. I'll make a motion. I have a motion that may or should be approved of the minutes of the September 17 meeting. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion made consecutive. Is there any discussion of that motion? Hearing none? We're going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Monica, I just had. Correspondents. We have a series of emails here from a lady named Amber Leher. I'll spell that for you if I miss it.
Yes, please.
A L E H R B R. And she lives at 33 Church Street with. And her complaint goes like this. There's still in the P C A team. I'm ready to report a serious concern regarding the water quality in Sterling. My tap water has been consistently brown and discolored. My filtration system installed on September 9th is already clogged and blackened. I have photos, attached photos taken today showing the condition of the mean of the filters. I'm also attaching photos of the water quality. It's an ongoing issue for quite some time and clearly becoming increasingly concerning that residents are still experiencing poor water quality without clear communication or resolution. Discoloration and sediment are not only damaging home filtration systems, but also raising serious doubts about the safety and long-term health impact of using this water. It's unacceptable that households should have to question whether their tap water is safe. I'm requesting that this issue be investigated immediately and that residents be updated on the course. Safety status and corrective action being taken. Please also advise whether the water should be tested and avoided until the source of that issue is verified. This, of course, is a long-running problem. We're all aware of that. This is a series of emails and the bottom line is she's been in contact with Whitewater, who's been, several of these emails involve them. And she has, there's been, they've been flushing none as of Monday of this week, Monday and Tuesday this week.
Tuesday. Yesterday.
Excuse me, Tuesday and today. And the result of that and the fact that she's been dealt, she's been, had plenty of information handed her way. She's refused. Thank you for the detailed response and for clarifying the current testing steps being taken toward a long-term filtration solution. I'm a tenant of the property. I appreciate your transparency and the information about the W P C A meetings. While I understand the process for funding and approvals takes time, the water quality continues to be concerned, particularly given the visible sediment and discoloration. Even if the test indicate it's technically safe to drink, I do worry that it's unsafe to use for drinking, cooking, or bathing when it looks as it does in the photos. Are there any short-term measures or suggestions available for residents until the filtration system is fully addressed? I plan to follow your recommendations and attend the upcoming P W P C A meeting if possible to stay involved. And she thanks us for her time and effort. So that's where we stand at the moment. The water did not, they went right ahead and they answered her complaints, her complaints, her questions with the recommendation that's how, once the flushing is done, what to do at that point. And which involved everything from running the water till the water wants clear, also from flushing out your hot water heaters. They gave her everything she needed to know to make this situation a little better. And again, it's a temporary fix. We all know that. It's just that that was the complaint. That's how it was dealt with. And she hasn't been given the cold shoulder to say the least. So that's the question we can do with that particular item there. Any questions about that correspondence? Okay. Moving along, unfinished business. Discussion regarding an update on the Sterling Water System Filtration Plan. Judy, can you give us a little bit of that?
Sure. Federal government shutdown means that we are once again on hold as far as working with the EPA. We were supposed to have a follow-up meeting two weeks, three weeks ago and two weeks ago. And we got an email Tuesday or Friday from the EPA saying that they're not going to settle any meetings until further notice, which further notice is whenever the government reopens potentially. We've gotten the stamped final preliminary engineering report, which we can publish to the website. It basically is what was in the preliminary report. But we link question one of the numbers because it increased what we thought, we, what we did supply as estimates for this filtration plant at under $3 million and their final estimate is $4.9 million. So I questioned that. They've added in 31% for overruns even in contingencies, even though the estimate that we have from here or included. So it's a thorough process and hopefully it will be less than $4.9 million. So we'll update our application that we placed with the Connecticut Drain and Water Revolving Fund to be what the preliminary engineering report says at 4.9 million. And we'll move forward with that as quickly as we can.
Any questions for Judy on that? It's a long, long process. And when they give you varied numbers from one part of the report to another part of the report, obviously you need to question. Some of those answers, not all of them, but some of them can't be answered now because the government shut down, which means we can't. The report was prepared by the Environmental Protection Agency. And if you can't talk to them and they're the ones who have the numbers out there, you're kind of a failure. So that's where we are at the moment. We were basically waiting for them to come back to life and be able to answer some questions. But so at the moment, this very moment, there's very little we can do. We have been in contact with our contact with a fellow named Matt Cassidy, who came here in August as part of the hearing we had. And he's been contacted, Julia, and he, he doesn't work for the U S government. So he is, I'm not sure we worked for him, but that's, he doesn't, he's not, he, he was able to keep going, put it that way. So we had a conversation with him last week and he's somebody who's been through all this before in a variety of different places, in a bunch of different towns and different companies. So his advice is very, very good. And it's, it's a moment for just kind of waiting pattern and he is as well. Matt Cassidy has been a very big help to us. And we're going to, we're going to keep on, but at the moment, there's really not a lot we can do. A little later, we'll be able to say the government's got to come together and get back into their business. It'll take them a while to get reorganized and whatnot. So anyway, we're moving on with that. That's the update. Discussion regarding a budget for the Sterling Water System. That would be this document here, Ellen.
So last one I gave you was the Sterling Water Budget. It's profit and losses, which is in the package. It's the second to the last page. But leading up to that, I had also said that I would do a price comparison for water. The local water companies or towns. And nobody except for Judy that changed their rates. And they only went up a tiny bit. So the first set of pages I have are just the comparison between what Sterling is and what these other local water companies are. And on average, we're $2.59 lower than they are per 10,000 gallons for residential. And that was with our $1 per 1,000 gallon increase that was done last year, plus December affected for January. So there wasn't a lot of movement for the other towns. Most of the other towns had done a three-year increase schedule. So this is the last year for Norwich, the last year for Robben, and the last year, let's say, in the more three years. So we're still under the average price per 1,000 gallons. The next set is the service charge for the water meters. We were at $28. We increased that last year to $30 for the 5.8 cent meters, which is what most buildings use. We also have three buildings that have a 2.0 meter. And that had been $66. We raised that to 75. The bottom line on this early, we are well below everybody else on the quarterly meter prices. So there's, in comparison, there's room there that would send us out above and above else. So what I had done last year was I just gave you the current rates and the year fee and then did some, what would happen if we did increases, what, how it would impact the 10,000 gallons. So starting with residential, we're currently at 650 and $30 per meter. If we went to $7.50 per 1,000 gallons and increased the meter fee by $35, that's a 15.8% increase. I might have to go through the rest of the numbers until I explain why they go so high. Our goal is to break even. And based on our budget or profit and loss for this year, we're just shy of $57,000 short for water. So to get there, we have to increase the price per gallon across the board by $7.80 and increase the meters by $10 each to $40 and change meter by $50 per quarter. That's a substantial increase to go from, I wanted to get a break even. So you'd be going from 650 per 1,000 gallons to, you know, 13, 14, 35, which would put Sterling over anybody else as far as the price per gallon. The bottom line is our system is expensive to operate. We talked about how we could cut expenses and there really isn't any room in our expenses. We don't have anything in the budget for improvements other than building maintenance of $1,000 a year. Our biggest expense is managing the system between Whitewater, managing it and chemicals that they use coming out and servicing this stuff. They're there three days a week, providing water testing, which they do every month. They help us with some of the government reports that we have to file. We have to have a licensed operator and they're not any expensive. So getting to a break even would be really difficult at this point for a young woman.
So a year ago, well, year was coming January, we raised the rate by a dollar for 10,000 gallons.
Yep.
From 550 to 650. We talked at that time that that was, we thought was probably as much as the customers could handle. And obviously that comes with it, there was a hearing, a half-day hearing. And just for the record, there wasn't a single person who attended that hearing. There has to be a town meeting which followed that hearing to agree to vote that. There was also no one attended that. So there was no interest whatever. And this was after completely doing, doing everything we could to let the customers on the water system know there would be a hearing, then know that the increase was going to be a dollar for 10,000 gallons and also the meter rate that we tried, was that, was made? For 1,000 gallons, excuse me. So anyway, we did what we could do. We did what we had to do and we still get no response at all. On the other hand, we can't ignore this situation. We're losing to the, something to the tune of 60,000 gallons, about $60,000 a year in this water system. We talked this afternoon just unofficially, talked about it. We were to raise that from 650 to 850. That would probably get us to a point where we would bring in probably $18,000, $19,000 more than last year, which means instead of losing 60,000, we'll be losing roughly 42,000, which is an improvement, no question. But, but that's where we're at, folks. It's just, do we want to even consider raising the rates again this year? I don't, I'm not saying do it tonight, but I mean, at least talk about the possibility of doing it tonight.
So if it went from 850, from 650 to 850 and if we increase the meter from $30 to $40 as a 31.6% increase to a user who averages 10,000 gallons per month, it's an annual increase to about $10 a month, or $30 per quarter.
What's your thinking, gentlemen?
It's a pretty, it's a pretty tough, we, we know that we need it, but, and you said, you know, we all know there was nobody here at the last hearing we had, you don't know. But we're seeing this increase and knowingly the waters, you know, we're getting more complaints now than we ever have before at this, at this stage.
Isn't that true?
And if we raise this, you know, which we've got to do something, complaints are just going to be too bad. They go, what happens if it gets to the state level?
That might be beneficial.
It might be, but they'll, it might be, but they're going to tell us we've got to raise it or they're going to do it themselves.
Raise what?
The rate.
They can't, they can't raise the rates.
Probably the old company, they can't do that.
We're not in the.
It's an, excuse me, municipally owned company. They can't tell you what to try.
Right, but they can come in and start looking at what we're doing to improve the water.
Right, that's still, how many years away before we can improve? It's just a guesswork.
If you, if it's, how far away is it right now? You're probably at least two years. If the town wanted to fund the whole thing, you could probably break ground first. But then you're putting the whole bill and not getting any potential grants. We potentially have, we're on the, it's a project list because we did the application in March. So we are actually on the list and we're the only one on there.
We're in, we're in San Antonio.
Everybody else is on there for lead for other problems. And we're what's considered disadvantaged community. So it might pose a line for two grants. We'll also look at USDA funding. But in the end, I know you've got a lot of hurdles. The town has a lot of hurdles to cover because even if you get the funding, you still have to get, have a town meeting to approve the expenses of, say it ends up truly costing $3 million and we get half of it as a grant. You still have to pay a million and a half dollars, which is a permanent tax payer. So how, it's a, it's a really tough situation for everybody, for people who are on the water system to deal with quality of water. And we, the commission has kept the rates lower over the years, I believe. From what I read in the minutes, it's largely because of the quality of the water. But how do you improve the quality of the water without funding? And then you're going to have to get the whole town to agree.
Do you have a question?
Give me a question.
With the new system, the new filtration system, would that totally eliminate the discoloration in all houses?
It would, we're going a long way to doing about. I can't answer that question. Nobody's been, no one's been able to answer that question before. It's been asked, but, or in one way or another. But I haven't heard a definite yes. It would definitely eliminate it, right? Have you?
My concern is that $4 million later, we've still got people complaining about the water.
Possible.
The system, the way that we understand it is it will filter out the sediment, the iron and the minis, which are the two biggest concerns naturally occurring. They're not, many of these can be harmful themselves.
We're all damaged, truly.
Yes, exactly. So if it's done and based on the levels that we have, they are saying that it should filter everything out, which goes into a backwash tank, creates other sludge, which will be an additional expense. We'll have to have that discarded somewhere.
One, one other question. How close would it be to breaking even if you went with parity, raising the price to parity with the other systems in the area?
If we went to the average? Average would be $9.09. So we would still.
Still a half dollar. The average is $9.09 per 1,000 gallons. We're 650, roughly $2.50 away from that. And we can raise it last year, effective January 1st.
Again, you know, it boils down to, we're talking about what 100, 100, roughly 100 homes.
There's 112 meters.
112 meters. So what we're actually talking about is, is these people and half of them, I bet, I don't know if it's half or a lot, but they're only tenants.
That's correct.
And so the rest of the town doesn't know that they're paying the free.
Very good chance they don't. Many people don't know.
Many, many, many don't realize that they're paying the free.
I think it's safe to say that many people in town really realize they always do.
Exactly. So I, I don't, you know, you're caught in the middle of this and what, what can you do about it?
This is a dead if you do and dead if you don't situation.
Exactly, exactly. I've been watching this, I don't know how many years, I've been saying, you know, we just can't get ahead of it, about what we're doing.
And the thing is, the.
That would bring it up to 22,005, so it'd still be short 40.
Still short. The, it's actually better than nothing. But you're better than nothing and you're going to have to raise the price when the new system comes in anyway.
Yeah.
So some people are starting to realize because there's been some chatter about the filtration system and what it's going to cost. And some people are saying, you're saying the whole town's going to pay for that, which is true.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, and other people say, well, why is that any different than anything else you have to pay for? That I may not benefit from or you may not benefit from, but other people in town benefit from, like the school system.
Yeah, and actually it's very, very similar to the school system.
As far as the community expense.
See, at this stage of the game, if we raise a lot of money, raise the prices up, but I think it's not going to make that water chain come around a bust out.
Not yet.
It's still a long way off. But here we are, we're charging all this extra, extra, extra money for nothing. I mean, I literally mean.
I know, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. That's why that's one of the reluctance, that's why I think this committee over the years has been reluctant to raise the water rates because they know they were basically raising the rates on one of this not good. You know, or impure.
It's not going to make the water even.
Right. On the other hand, do we have a responsibility to the taxpayers of the town to try to cut that $60 deficit, $60,000 deficit every year down as much as possible? Back to me is that, you nailed it when you said it's the, you can't win this one. There's no way to win this.
Right.
As, as I'm sure someone has said before, it seems like a breach of filtration systems in every home.
And that had been ruled out because several reasons. Well, this lady's letter right here almost spells it out to a T.
She put one in.
She put a filtration system in of some kind. I don't know what it is. It could be nothing but a cartridge, but it could be something more sophisticated. I'm thinking in that particular location, it's probably a cartridge. But if you put a, even if you put a $2,000 system in all these homes, the price would be far less than $3 million, without a doubt. But the fact that she's a tenant, she's, that the owner of that tenant is going to be responsible for whatever we put into that house. If they choose to make, to maintain it correctly, that would be fine. But if, I would dare say that's a good chance that some of those landlords, I'm not going to maintain that system very well. And all of a sudden, you've got something that's worse than what it was to start with. So, and basically that's the reason that it was ruled out as a possibility. It's very tempting on the surface to do that. But it's just when you think about the ramifications down the road, that's not going to work. So if every last one of those homes were owned by the person in it, now you've got a much better chance of them taking care of that. But they're not. I don't want to guess 50%, 60% or with the tenants, with the landlord.
Oh, you're right.
And they're, and they're absentee landlords in many cases. They're not just people who live in one part of the house and rent out the other. So that system is just not going to work, but it would be, it's really tempting to think of.
Yeah, we, we looked at it all from the committee standpoint and you, of, if these people didn't pay the bill and all this stuff, that you shut them off. But it doesn't work that way because if the, if the owner does not live in the building, you can't shut them off.
So that the owner's not responsible for the water bill?
Yes, we do not know tents. Our bills only go to owners.
Only goes to owners.
We're not in the business of building tents. I, we don't even know.
Who's learning?
Like this woman that got in touch with us, you know, she said she was a tenant. She did her address in there so I could tell her it wasn't, she wasn't a tenant.
You did mention, well, and what, she says she was a tenant?
I asked.
I guess the owner would have a financial interest in keeping the water clean. Otherwise, people would leave. I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm taking up your time.
No, no, it's a, it's a very difficult, difficult margin. It's very difficult. There's just no good answer. There's just no good answer at all. What's your feeling, Jack? Well, let's get back to the possibility of at least entertaining the idea of raising the rates.
I'm all for that. I just can't see at least getting closer. The 60,000 a year or whatever, it's, that's just not working. If we can get it down to 40, I mean, we're not in the business to lose it more, to lose it. So I say we, we put the rates up and at least collect some of our debt anyway.
Leo?
What Jack just said.
You agree with it?
Yeah.
Now, that, that number that I gave you was $2 per 1,000 gallons from 650 to 850. And that would get you roughly $18,000. Am I correct, Julie?
That and increase in meter fee by $10 from those households is $15,000.
That would, that would net about $18,000 more than we're netting now. And that would just reduce that $60,000 loss to roughly 41,000 or 42,000.
And then how much more do we have to go up to? Yeah, even break even will be equal to the other towns in Georgia.
If we go to 850, we're, we're just going to, we're not, it's not too much.
I, I'd like to throw something out there. Don't anyway, throw anything at me.
Nobody will, I promise.
Yeah. What would happen if we raised the rate like you just mentioned and do the impossible, well, possibility of saying, okay, let's make a new line item on a budget of 1 mil exclusively for this.
Of this, I don't know.
A million dollars. A million dollars. A 1 mil.
1 mil. You're in the budget, when the budget's created, when the down budget is created, the down budget is going to start sometimes, that's when the, that's when the first talk about the budget is going to be. You're saying that just make a budget with 1 mil already built in for this purpose.
Right.
Okay, so what do, what do we gain by doing that?
I, I don't know. I'm just throwing it up there. Well, we're not getting nowhere the other way at all.
We're, the town's funding it every, every year.
The town's funding it, right. But this way, when we say 1 mil, the people's going to know about it. And that's good, I think, at this stage.
It's very good. You are too early about that.
I mean, just.
About $330,000.
And you're going to be surprised at how many people are going to scream that when we'll increase in something like this. They would be going to scream.
What's the number, I'm wondering?
About $350,000.
So if you say 1 mil?
Yeah.
175,000?
I know, just find out. I, I, what I mean by just find is if your short hole is. I, I, what, what I mean by just, I mean, is if your threshold is sixty, it would do some portion of the increase, I think, uh, half a mil, even if it's one seventy-five. Are you've got your budget, if you put a hundred and seventy-five in there, but you're still unsure, forty, what's the other hundred?
Thirty-five.
Thank you.
Somewhere in the middle, the middle ground of all of this, it would seem to me that it might be useful to go to, to expect that the owners are gonna have to expect water that's on parity cost-wise with other towns. Why should they expect cheaper water from Sterling if we're gonna have a new system put in, cleaning and everything like that? And then if the rates go up, we've got, I mean, we've got good water, they should expect to pay what the other towns pay. And so then if they don't like it, they can push to the legislature to act faster, or or they can sell the house or whatever. I don't, I don't know. It's just that that it's, it's, it's really wildly out of whack if we're giving cheap water as well as having everybody else in the town pay for the hundred people, you know?
Well, first of all, it's three hundred and twenty-five people, plus the school, plus the school.
Well, plus the school.
The school is under the same system, and the odd part is the school never complains about the water. Same water.
I mean, that, that's, yeah.
And there is, there's no filtration system at school.
We don't know what's going on in those houses, how bad they know.
We got no idea.
Part of it is the way the, the end. So, yeah, so the system, if you're pushing the water, you're pushing it out.
I, I had something to throw out there. I wanna play the first Republican in town. We're gonna tell him outright that the town is going in debt because of this year. But let's look at it, not how I work, the way I could think about it is that we've been doing this for how many years? How many years have we been doing this? And we keep on adding the water resources owes the town, owes the town, owes the town. What's wrong with it the way it is? All right, I mean, somebody's gonna say that. We've been doing it for years and years. Why should we change it? I know it sounds stupid, but I can notice sixty, I can see people saying that.
Absolutely.
Change the fact that the town continues to pay water, or while improving the quality of the water.
We're not, but this is gonna even it out. This is, this is gonna even it out, the fact that we're gonna let everybody know this has been going on, and the first person's gonna say it. This is the first I heard of it. We're going in debt. We're not going in debt. Only on this piece of paper, we're going in debt.
That's true.
That's the only thing that tells us we're doing something wrong. Because nobody's ever touched it before. All of a sudden now, we've got to raise the rate? I don't know. I don't know. It's a tough question to answer. I know, I've been on this commission since I think it's time.
I think, yeah.
And I listen to everything, but the more I think about it, I'm saying, what the hell? We tell, I tell everybody in town that I know who's not talking about it. You mean, people up in North Sterling, people up in Ekonka, paying for the people down in the center of town. So what's gonna be any different? Nothing.
I can't, I can't argue with what you said, but what's, what's, what's the, what's the, um, solution?
The solution is we're gonna get this sys, this new system.
Okay.
That's the solution. Let it go till the system comes through.
No, don't raise the rate until you get better water.
Exactly. We're still gonna be in debt to the town. I'll agree with you. But who's gonna be hurt by it? Absolutely nobody. They haven't been hurt before. When you make your budget up, nobody says anything about water on that budget. And we don't say nothing about it when you bring it up before the town hearing, nothing's said about it. So what's gonna change it now?
It may be a good idea.
I'm sorry, I, I mean, that's just always sometimes I feel about this, only thing.
Don't be sorry to me. You're, you're more than welcome to your opinion, and I, it's just that it's a different opinion, that's all. No, you're more than welcome to it by all means. You've, you've been, you've dealt with this as long as anybody here. Just that, we're just trying to find, it's not kind of a reasonable solution.
It's not the people's fault that are buying the water that we're not charging them. It's not their fault. It's just the way it is.
So what would you like to do with this issue tonight? Want to table it till next month?
What, what are the options on, John? Are you gonna push tonight or?
We can make a recommendation to the selectmen to make a rate increase. Then it has to, then it's gonna go public, where it is.
That's an option.
That's an option for, if for a rate increase, you recommend a rate increase, um.
Or if you'd rather, we can simply pack, we can just table it till the next meeting and bring it up all again and figure out another.
You know, I, I, I can see bringing it up, that's gonna get us eighteen thousand dollars more a year. It's not gonna help the overall owner of the town, because the, the, the water commission isn't ever gonna pay off this debt for one hour long time. But it will reduce a little bit of the debt by eighteen thousand dollars, approximately.
I think it adds to your point, Pete, is that if the, um, if, without that water system, we couldn't really have the industrial park, you know, populated. And we, so it is an expense to the town, but it's also true that if we didn't have it, they, they couldn't be up there. So it's, it's.
That, that, you know, that's something that I think most people don't realize, that the, the industrial park, the, the industries in there do require that water.
Right, and the school does too.
School does too.
So it's just another industrial educational expense, you might say.
I'm still waiting for an answer. What would you like to do tonight?
I think we ought to raise the rates to some extent because I, I think we should recover some of the money at least that we've been outlaying. The other thing is that assuming that we get a filtration plant in and hopefully get a good chunk of it paid for by, you know, grants or EPA or whoever, uh, my understanding is that then the, what, Connecticut Water or somebody would be interested in the system once we have a filtration plant in. Once, if they were to take it over, then they're gonna end up having to change the rates because they're gonna charge the same as what they charge Plainfield or whoever it is in the area. And it might be a little bit less sticker shock to anybody that's on the water system now, you know, kinda build up the, the price over the time to kinda like, hey, it, it, it's coming, folks.
Thank, you gonna make that a motion?
Uh, well, I'm, I'd like to look at, I'd like to digest a little bit more information as far as like, a, a particular number, if you will.
Would you like to just postpone this for a month? So you can do that?
We're close to it now. Well, right, well, see, the thing is, we've been postponing this, like, forever. I would like to see if we can do something tonight if possible, and maybe take another couple of minutes to just digest the numbers, maybe if possible, come to some kind of decision tonight, and then that way you don't put it off another month.
I agree with you.
Um, you know.
And then why don't we just?
As opposed to kicking the can down the road, as everybody.
I couldn't agree with the phrase in our view.
So you, you, you're saying that, you're, you're not, are you, are you picking on something that's on paper here?
Probably.
I, I, but I'd like to digest the numbers for, is all. That's what, that's what I'm saying.
That, that's what I'm saying.
At least it's something that is not gonna make the water any better.
I hear you. I hear you.
So the, the other, I talked to White Water and I talked to them, um, we have been functioning this system two times a year. We're gonna go to four. That's something that's been recommended by White Water since one sixteen. So we're gonna try to do it four times a year, well, we're gonna do it four times a year instead of just twice, and maybe that will stop someone suddenly from filling out the passage. It's just a one more thing to try.
Now, I don't think we have one complaint under that rating question from any of the, um.
We don't even know if she takes it or not.
No, I, we actually do, because it was, it was, or most, the, the biggest issue that we had had was there were people that were being significantly under billed due to an error that was being made. Those individuals came in, when I explained to them what had happened, um, so had you seen a significant decrease in your water bill when this change happened, or, or yeah? They didn't ask any questions then, but this is, you basically have the benefit of that error for years. Um, but this time I didn't really get any complaints, and I've been asking people when they come in. Um, I've had several people that will come in and they'll complain, and I'll say, have a seat, write out your complaint, um, email it, you know, W P C A, you know, it to link, you know, it to me, just, you gotta start. Any complaints on paper or electronic or come to me. And why else? Um, don't forget that they only opened last June, so they only had two bills before their increase, and it was only, it was a dollar per thousand gallons. It, it wasn't a huge increase.
So, Simon, you'd like a little more time to work this over? Yeah, can you, can you, I'd like to make a thought this situation? Jackie made your pay increase, yeah?
Yeah, you can, we shall go to our increase.
I do. And the ten-dollar increase on the meter, ever?
You, I, and then, the ten-dollar increase is gonna bring in about fifty-five hundred dollars over this year.
Okay, and the two-dollar increase? For the gallon?
Um, thirteen thousand.
Okay, so together with safety in January. I'm going to do something very uncommon, and I want to basically move on to the next, well, Neil did his research, and he must do. Um, but we want to discuss, discussion regarding branch labor except water usage. I believe he was in our minutes. It turns out that he was charged, his bill was extremely high because the, um, there was obviously a forty-year reading in this case.
Well, no, we don't know what happened.
We don't know what happened there. I believe the, the, um, I'm a little surprised to see this back on, on the agenda.
I don't know why it's on the agenda.
Because it should, there was, the agreement we made, I mean, the motion was made to pay the average usage for him.
Which he's, um.
And to replace the meter. Do you know what payment the meter had in relation?
I requested it.
Okay, so that had been done, yeah.
Um, and he was satisfied with this.
Saying the average, okay.
Yeah, this quarter's billing was normal and deserved and great stuff. So I'm not sure this.
I'm not sure we're still on, on the agenda.
But it's, you know, taken.
We have, I think we can like, how about we get a motion to simply, Ellen, remove it from the agenda for future meetings, because the issue is itself, it's still.
Yeah, I'm looking at motion now, because we, uh, uh, this regard, uh, for labor, actually, for water usage, usage.
I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, move on to David Tolda Dusa. Here's the gentleman who lives on, um, Sterling Road, and he said they had an agreement with Russell Gray to not be charged the assessment fee for his sewer line because he doesn't have any sewer hooked up. We've asked the building inspector to look at it, and he was unable to get into the property, and we'll have, I think we should table this until next month, when he's had, uh, enough, enough time to get into the property and look at it. Is there a motion of that effect?
Yeah. No, certainly not.
Motion made, seconded that we table item D regarding David Tedusa's request to waive the sewer bill. On favor?
Aye.
All votes, motion carries. Move business? We've discussed about everything we could with this situation, um. Judy needs to think about the fact that it's not gonna change anything. There's something to make aware that we, Judy and I have convinced that this new filtration plant will happen. We're not gonna put the data, we've been, it's, it's gonna be in the future sometime. Could be a couple of years down the road. Let's hope it's not much more than that. The, um, when that happens, there will be additional expenses to the town, because it's, um, it's gonna be a, a plant that's gonna be worth somewhere in the vicinity of three and a half million dollars. Obviously, the insurance rate is gonna increase. That's just a given. That, we, Betsy Jangle has told me, they just wanna keep that in mind. That price, the insurance for the town property is going to increase with that. There will no doubt be an additional charge for electricity, because you're running several, maybe as many as two more pumps and two more filtration, um, you know, filters, if you will. And I don't have any idea how this stuff works. It's just that you can visualize that it's gonna be an increase in electrical. There just, there's no way out of that. The discharge, the water that gets discharged, it doesn't, it'll be contaminated water, if you will, is gonna be pumped into a tank. Judy alluded to a while back, that, that the tank is gonna be basically a sediment tank. The sediment will, it will, it will filter out of it, get stored in that tank, the rest of the water will be pushed and get put into the sewer system, which goes to Plainfield, and that means there will be additional water that we have to, we have to pay for in order to play, because that's gonna be an additional charge as well. And then some point, that tank that holds all that sludge will have to get pumped out. So that, those are, those are just, I'm not trying to make it sound bad, I'm just saying, these are things, this system is not gonna come without additional expenses, that's all. Um, hopefully, and we're all very hopeful, that the water that comes out of the system is gonna be pure as ever. And I, I certainly hope so, but it will be a grievance of one, if not not. No one has given us any guarantee of that.
No, we haven't actually had an engineer design the system. That's, um, a little, a little bit. Once we know where we are with approvals, that's some of the next steps. We have to only use, um, contractors that are physical state company that have to be, um, there's potentially federal funding, there's federal funding, probably, um, and then actually having the system designed and then purchasing everything to build the system and construction and permits.
That's true. Like you just said, all those, um, increases when the system comes in, that would be, will definitely have to go up then also. Uh, that's why I feel, uh, just a steady increase starting now, you know? That way people aren't, it's not a shock when we have to go way up, you know? All of a sudden, a big jump.
I think big jerk, I mean, I'd say the same thing, is get them accustomed to it now. Neil, are we getting closer to a decision?
Yeah, um, I think we should go, I think it's the two dollars per thousand gallons and increase the meters, uh, five eighths by ten, the two inch meter by fifty to fifty-eighteen thousand dollar increase.
Make a motion of that effect?
Sure.
Motion been made.
So.
Then we increase the, increase the, uh, the rates, two dollars and fifty cents.
No.
Excuse me.
Two dollars.
Two dollars.
Excuse me.
For a total of eight dollars and fifty cents per thousand gallons. And maybe raise the difference, huh?
And that's a residential.
That's for residential.
That would be two dollars for each, uh, for.
Okay. So it's two-dollar increase, and it's an additional increase of the meter charges. Well, you're second to that motion?
Oh, seconded.
Any further discussion? What happens at this point, if we can, we agree to this, as Judy said, that will go into the recommendations of the board selection, who will call the, um, hearing? And then, actually, it'd be a town meeting. Motion made, the seconded, that we just. Motion paid, the seconded, that we just increased the rates, the rates we just talked about. Any discussion? There is none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote? The ayes have it. We'll move on to new business, as, I don't know if we have any new business that we haven't already broken up.
I don't.
Any other business coming from the water pollution control group? There is none? I, I, after move, which are?
You got it.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen.
What time is it, Tom, we can argue?
Sit up. I don't think we have to.
I don't think we have to move. All financial.
Financial, yes.